I'd like to call the regular board meeting of the Forsyth County Board of Education to order. It is June the 20th, 2023 at 5:00 PM. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? A motion by Mike and a second by Lindsey, all in favor. Do I have a motion to go into executive session for personnel? Motion by Wes and a second by Mike, all in favor? Unanimous. We will be back at 6:00. Motion to come out of executive session? A motion by Mike and a second by Wes, all in favor? Unanimous. Do I have a motion to approve personnel A, 1 through 68, B, 1 through 25, and C, 1 through 32? Motion by Lindsey and a second by Mike, all in favor? Unanimous. I'd like to welcome everyone to the June 20th Forsyth County Board of Education meeting. If we could all rise and say the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. The first thing we have on our agenda is public participation on agenda items. The guidelines for public participation, we have a little timer right here. When the light turns green, your three minutes start. When it turns yellow, you have 30 seconds remaining. A flashing yellow is 10 seconds remaining, and then it buzzes, and you know your time is up. So with that being said, first on the agenda is Allison Strickland.
Good afternoon.
Ms. Strickland, will you turn that button on when it turns green? Yes, please. Thank you.
Okay, got it. Okay. Hi, my name's Allison Strickland. I am here to speak about the four material harmful to minors appeals that you all will be voting on today. I chose to push for the appeal because the law states that harmful to minors refers to the quality of the description or representation in whatever form nudity, sexual content, sexual excitement, or sadistic abuse, when it, meaning the passage, is one, taken as a whole, it predominantly appeals to the period, shameful, or morbid interest of minors. Excuse me. Two, is patently offensive to prevailing standards in the period, I'm sorry, in adult community as a whole with respect to what is suitable materials for minors. And three, is lacking in serious literary, artistic, political, or scientific value for minors when taken as a whole. These four books are up for appeal, and they all contain explicit sex of minor children in compromising situations for a large majority of each book, not just a little bit, a lot of the book of each of these books. They run the gamut of child prostitution, forced rape, pedophilia, bestiality, sodomy, drug and alcohol abuse, all of very young minor children with adult partners. There is not one educational thing to be had from any of these books. I urge you to yet again review the material harmful to minors law as it is not being applied as it should be. Instead of applying it to the passage, it is being applied as the whole book, and that is not how the law was written at all. The board needs to remember the age range of kids at each school level when making these decisions as well. Freshmen can be as young as 13. That means you have a high school full of 13- to 18-year-olds. We cannot make our standards based on those 18-year-old kids. While some of those may be okay to read some of these books, my 13-year-old daughter is not. Same goes for the middle school ages. Sixth graders can be as young as 10. My children were 10 entering middle school. There may be 15-year-olds in that middle school, but my 10-year-old is still in the building, still has same access to those same books. That is not okay. We cannot look at the elder side of the range. We have to look at the entire range, including the youngest. So that is, that's all I have for the appeals. Thank you.
Next, we have TJ McKinnney. Good afternoon.
So, I'm TJ McKinnney. I have read this book from cover to cover, not just excerpts, so I'm going to say that. In this book, there are situations of two girls getting pregnant. One has an abortion, one does not. They're not shown as glamorous. They're not depicted as a you-want-to-do-this situation. There are two young men who aren't gay, and there's a lot of discussion about, does God love them? Can God love gay people? I submit that that's probably the problem that some people have with this book, is that it entertains the notion that we can be gay and love God, that we can do these things and make these huge mistakes and still find God. And that is a lot of what is in this book. And it says fuck 27 times. I'm a middle school teacher. I have taught ELA 9th grade. I hear it 27 times when they change classes. The book is not introducing kids to sex. If you're in high school, you know they're having sex. They don't even think blowjobs are sexual. That's just an alternative. Like, frankly, a young man's sister dies after a long illness in this book. If you can't say fuck over that, over a five-year-old kid dying, there's not a better word for that. These kids are saying it, they're doing it, they are not learning this from books. This book is actually a tale of what not to do. These kids get in serious jeopardy. There are serious complications. There's not finishing school. There's, it is not a guide of how-to. It is a cautionary tale, and it is the language of kids in high school, it is the things they are doing, and it is the literary source they relate to. These kids are not going to read anything less than this because it's not challenging and it does not represent who they are or where they are in those stages in life. It just doesn't. This book represents our kids. It's foundational. It's also written in first person in verse. Like, if you look at it, it's written in verse from first person, from like seven different people. Literary alone, that's a huge device. That is a huge literary telling. This is not the kind of thing you see every day. It is just not. To say that this book doesn't have value because it has a word in it that these kids have used in my classroom, like, they're not supposed to, but you all know they do. They do. I'm just saying, if we start banning books because they represent our student population, they're not going to enjoy books, they're not going to read books, and they're not going to read a cautionary tale about a girl who has an abortion and regrets it for the rest of her life. For the rest of her life, she says. That's a cautionary tale. That's not a book we pull from the shelves. That's a book you put in front of people and you say, look, it's not a good idea. And I truly think the whole problem is it does represent gay Christian people. We can be both.
Thank you. Okay. Next, we have Tracy Priego.
My name is Tracy Priego, and I'm here to urge the board to approve the parent book appeals that are in front of you today. I first became aware of sexually explicit books being in our school media centers when the Forsyth County News published this headline.
Excuse me.
You cannot use signs.
You can't.
Can't use signs. Nobody can use signs.
I became aware of sexually explicit books being in our school media centers when the Forsyth County News published the headline, "Eight Books Have Been Removed For Sexually Explicit Content: Amend Nationwide Library Debate." Our school system's communications director was quoted by the Forsyth County News saying, "For us, it's not about censorship because obviously students and parents have the right to choose to read whatever they want outside of the school. They can purchase it, or they can go to the public library, but we have a responsibility whenever it comes to sexually explicit content in the walls of our buildings." After reading the article, I read the books, all of them, 2,106 pages, not just excerpts. The books were full of profane and sexually explicit content, the kind of information Todd Shirley and his safety department warns parents about when we meet with them at those events hosted at cluster schools. Parents found more books with this content. A federal lawsuit had to be filed in order for parents to read the excerpts here. Our own local newspaper, the Forsyth County News, has not printed excerpts read by parents. After one of the board meetings, I asked its education reporter, Sabrina Kearns, why not? The response was, "We can't print obscene material." The communication director said there were sexually explicit books in the schools, parents were refused the right to read them here, and our local newspaper can't print anything from those books or what we read from them because they're considered obscene, yet the books remain on media center shelves. Your vote can affirm the stance of the school system and protect students from sexually explicit content. The world already provides so much access to this. Parents are fighting it on the outside. We need help fighting it from within. If you vote against the parent book appeals, please require parental permission to access these books. There are no restricted sections, there are no warning labels. Once they open the book, they're exposed. I know you talk to your children about not opening any books until they get home. I think we all know how books are chosen off the shelves. They're already open by the time we go to the self-checkout and bring them home. Help us reconcile the stance of our school system with the continued availability of sexually explicit content in our school media centers. Add parents to the district media committee. Shouldn't it have a majority of parents since the books in our school libraries are for recreational reading? Help us out and vote to approve the appeals.
Thank you. Okay. Next, we have Cindy Martin.
Good evening. I was here in January and read from two of the books being voted on tonight. I am here again to make sure we all understand the vile content in these books. Explicit sex, pornography, child pedophilia, child prostitution, and drug abuse. For the book Orix and Crake, the school database has this description. Jimmy struggles for survival as he mourns the loss of Orix, a girl he met through a kiddie porn website. Page 89, "The two of them were watching porn in Crake's room. They lit up a joint and started surfing. They went to Hot Tots, a global sex-trotting site. It claimed to show real sex tourists filmed doing things they'd be put in jail for. This was how they first saw Orix. She was only about eight years old. She didn't have a name. She was just another little girl on a porno site. She was small-boned and exquisite and naked, just like the rest of them, with nothing on her but a garland of flowers and a pink hair ribbon. Those were frequent props on the sex kiddie sites. She was on her knees with another little girl on either side of her, positioned in front of a large man, a man pretending to be shipwrecked on an island of delicious midgets. The act involved whipped cream and a lot of licking. The effect was both innocent and obscene. The three little girls were going over the guy with their kittenish tongues and their tiny fingers, giving him a thorough workout to the sound of moans and giggles. Are you going to vote to retain child pornography and child pedophilia tonight? Does this book reflect students' child pedophilia, reflect our students? I don't think so." The book Dime is also being voted on tonight. The school description says, "14-year-old Dime, a foster child, finds love and family as a prostitute, but when her pimp rejects her for a new girl, will Dime have the strength to leave?" This book is about a 14-year-old being used for prostitution and an 11-year-old girl named Lollipop used for child pedophilia. Page 101, "I don't know how it all went on before the internet, but that girl earned her hotel room 100 times over, putting her little body in front of that computer camera. Daddy couldn't get a lot, could get into a lot of trouble putting that little girl on a live feed. That's why he could charge so much more for Lollipop. You wouldn't believe how much money men paid to look at her. All she had to do was live her life in whatever hotel, but naked, doing her little-girl things. And then she, when she became bigger, top dollar was paid to visit her in person." Members of the board, I ask you, are you really going to compromise on child pedophilia? If the answer is yes, then what will you compromise on next?
Okay. Next, we have Pat Wall.
Just for a point of clarification, that was something mentioned earlier, the "it" as a whole refers to the whole book. The "it" is the book, not the specific passages that are read. So, anyway, here we go. Last year, several students on many occasions pleaded with this board to see them, to hear them, and to hear their legitimate claims of being overlooked and bullied for their color, their heritage, their gender, even their religion. Books that were removed were at the heart of the issue at that time. These students were dismissed as being just kids. Lost in all of this was what the kids wanted and needed to be represented and respected. Forsyth County has bright students who know how to advocate for themselves, and advocate they did, all the way to the Office of Civil Rights at the U.S. Department of Education. Now we come to some interesting responses to the recent resolution agreement. Cindy Martin, who declared herself leader of Mama Bear, said, quote, "This is not about the books." And she continues, "This is about the federal government using bully tactics against our school system to indoctrinate our children into the LGBTQ ideology." And her group is not the only one. On the Facebook page of No Left Turn in Education, that's your group, Mr. Valdez, it says, "Our focus must stay on CRT and transgender indoctrination. Neither exists in our schools. Who do you think is going to indoctrinate students? Not trans kids who just want to be left alone to live their lives. Teachers? If they want to indoctrinate students, it's going to be to turn in their assignments and pay attention in class. Because of this hateful fear-mongering, the government had to step in to protect a very vulnerable population. There is zero evidence where anyone is trying to indoctrinate students to become transgender. None. It can't be any clearer than that. The freedom to read books of their choosing in their school libraries is already settled to a Supreme Court precedent. Books are safe places to experience all the stresses and difficulties that teens face today. Sometimes they may think that they are the only ones who feel the way they do, or who have gone through what they are experiencing, which can be isolating. Through books, teens can learn empathy and see how others have found solutions to problems. We hope you will consider all this when voting on any books that come before you. We know the Georgia law, which represents how to challenge a book, but for the life of me, I cannot understand how one parent who hasn't read the book has copied selected sentences from an outside source, whose child has not checked out the book or read the book, can then object to the book in hopes of having it banned. If you don't like what's in the book, don't read it." Thank you.
Next is Ann Christopher.
I'm back. It's been several months since I've spoken, but today I am reading a passage from page 423 of the book Tilt, which is part of the appeals process today. Lucas texts instructions, "Get naked and lie down on your bed." He gives me time to comply, and I have to admit, I get a little thrill thinking about what might come next. I keep my panties on. As far as he knows, I'm still on my period. Play with your nipple, get it hard. I want a pick. I wait for another text. It doesn't take long. Beautiful, this is awesome. And now I want another one. Touch yourself, you know where, let me see. I look at the photo I sent him, leaning back against my pillow, my stomach goes all the way flat, but my boobs don't. For sure, they'll grow over the summer. I cut them gently, and they overflow the bowls of my hands. Suddenly, my cell buzzes. Well, I'm waiting. I left one hand, I let one hand slide to the crotch of my panties, pull the lacy material just a little to one side. I keep my fingers covering the most personal part, take a quick picture that I hope will do. While I wait for his response, I leave my hand where it is, just above a soft pulsing between my legs. I have never touched myself there before, not the way he wants me to, but now I do. Just to see, just to know, I move my middle finger slowly along the slick strip, discover the nub hiding beneath my pubic bone, the source of the building throb. Unbidden, my finger starts to move faster, and unbidden, my body rocks against it. It's like I've been possessed by something, someone, I have no control over it. I can't stop. Some urgency begins, grows like surf moving toward high tide. Brakes that can't be harnessed, or slowed, or stopped. That swell into a tidal wave, and with a crash in a bolt of understanding. If there was an eve, this must be how she felt right after she first figured out what an orgasm meant. Sexting, which is being promoted in that certain paragraph, there's another paragraph on page 396 that talks about oral sex, if you'd like to read that, it's pretty informative. Sexting is connected with early initiation of sexual activity. Unfortunately, we are seeing this as early as middle school. This is not educational or providing protection for our children by them having this material to read. Sexting can cause serious problems for teens. Not only can it lead to social embarrassment, but it also can lead to bullying and cyberbullying. Sexting comes with major risk, especially for young people who likely do not have the emotional maturity or understand the potential negative consequences. Sending messages and photographs of this type can lead to situations of sextortion, grooming, depression, anxiety, among many other things. Mental health and safety for our students, for our children, should remain and be a big priority for our students here in Forsyth County. Do kids need to be represented by sexting? No. We are not banning books. If you want the book, go buy it. But as a Forsyth County citizen, in our school libraries, they should not be there for our children.
Okay. Next, we have our consent agenda. I'm assuming everybody's had time to get any questions answered and look at it. Do I have a motion to approve? Motion by Mike and a second by Lindsey. All in favor? Unanimous. Presentation and discussion items. Our first one is the financial report with Mr. Larry Hamel. How are you this afternoon?
Fine, yourself? A little wet, a little humid. So tonight, we're going to discuss the May 2023 financial statements. As always, we keep goal three in mind when we talk about them. So for May 31st, 2023, we begin the month with about $189.6 million, and we ended the month with about $166.4. This time last year, we had about $131 million at the end of the month. One thing I do want to point out is that the, if you see the cash disbursement, it's a little higher than normal because we paid part of that healthcare increase bill that was retroactive back to January of this year, January 1st. So we paid about four months of bills, caught up three months, and paid one month of bills. So we paid about an extra $6 million activity this month. On the year-to-date budget report, as end of May, we have year-to-date collections of 94.43%. This time last year, we're at 98.12. A couple of things I do want to point out is we were, on the intangible tax, we were at 66, almost 67%. You can see we're at 43. And on the real estate and the tax, the next two below it, you can see where it's 65 and 94, almost 95, and we were at 100% of those as well. So those are the two major areas that we're having decreased because of what's going on with the economy. On the expense side, the expenses, like I said, were a little bit higher this month because of the extra healthcare costs that we had gotten funds for to pay for. We're at 88.4%. This time last year, we're at 91.52. So right now, we're at a little bit, about 2.8%, 2.9% below where we were last year. On the debt service cash analysis, both for the debt service regular account and the LGIP account, we have about $16.8 million. If you remember, we lowered the mill rate by 1 mill last year, and last year, we had about $51 million. This is where the additional funds, the SPOS 5 and general fund that we reserved out, will help pay for debt service going forward. The SPOS 5 account is down to $36 million. This time last year, at 56. We are quickly spending that money, getting to the point where we will be done with SPOS 5. SPOS 4 is done. 2018-20 bonds are down to about the last $5 million of unreserved funds. SPOS 6 is brand-new, started this year. This time last year, we're about 4.8, as we are first month of collections, and we're up to $44.6 million. In total, we have about $97.8 million in these funds. Last year, we had about $112. On the special revenue funds, this is everything, that's a federal funds and special, excuse me, and the school nutrition. As you can see, we are about $15 million year-to-date, which is normal for this time of the year. So we're on schedule. A breakdown in the cash balances for school nutrition and capital projects. Capital projects didn't change by much, still about $29 million. School nutrition had a better month than we expected. We're up to $21.8 million in fund balance, cash balance. On the investment summary, general fund, we're about $99 million. We continue to try to maximize amount of money we put in LGIP fund to get as much of revenue as possible in interest. This time last year, we're about 67.7. The Fund 200 LGIP, that's new this year, you saw earlier in our earlier slide, we got about $12.4 million in there. Fund 353, SPOS 4, the last $1.7 million that's left in that fund, that's year-to-go out this year on some land purchases. Fund 354, SPOS 5, down to $36 million. We had mentioned earlier, it was 56, and the SPOS 6 fund was only 4.8 collection the first month a year ago, and we're at 44.6. So in total, we have $194 million. We were about $133 last year, with SPOS 6 making up the biggest portion in general fund for the difference. On the SPOS collections, I do want to point out something. As we said about four months ago, we started noticing that the year-to-year comparison had slowed down to negative .05 and a positive .05, and last month, we showed you it was down to negative 2.43, and with this month, we're down to 4.42. So as you can see, sales tech collections is definitely slowing down, and it looks like we may be slowly entering into a recession. On elementary schools, all the receivables, disbursements, or no more activity for this time of the year. This time last year, we had about $4.48 million in those accounts. For the middle school and for the high school, the receivables, disbursements are normal for this time of the year. For the middle school, we had about $1.73 million this time last year, and for high schools, a little bit over $6 million. In total, our balances at the school checking accounts at the end of May were $13.3 million. They're up 12.2, we're up about $1 million. And then the breakdown is pretty much the same as it was last year, with only the high schools being 49%, and elementary schools being 37%. And middle school, still being the same where they were. And that's a financial for May 2023. Any questions?
I have a question about the intangible tax. Where were we last year at this time?
On the intangible tax?
We're at 43.7.
We were at 67% last time.
All right, and so we still have one more month to collect this for this budget. Is that correct for June?
Correct. And then whatever receivables we set up. I don't expect it to be more than 50% by the time we're all said and done.
Larry, on the QBE earnings, why is there such a large negative on the, on the collection?
So we got one month of June to collect, and then the accruals, that we still got a book. So we still got money coming in. It's broken out evenly almost every month, in terms of how it comes from the state. There are some differences. Typically, it's when midterm gets done, they figure out, hold harmless, what extra what extra funds we're going to get, plus any additional funds they do, like they did with the healthcare, they usually pay that out in May and June.
So we expect to see that?
Yeah, that rest of that money should go away. We should be fine on QBE. Whatever they promised on QBE, we'll go a hundred percent of it.
Thank you.
I have a question, since we are really looking at this year to last year. Could we make a column maybe that just says last year? Because I know you say it, but then I go back and can't think like exactly what it was.
You mean like right where it says percent used, have a previous year's percent used?
Previous year, yes.
That's fine, we can look at that.
If you could just put that on there, on the things that are relevant. I think that might help us all.
Sure, no problem.
I think you do that on the SPOS, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh huh, but like on this kind of things too.
Well, and is, is the intangible tax a worrisome state that we're in or no?
No, well, we, we had predicted to be higher this year just because of activity going into everything. And what the main factor on that is the house starts are down twenty percent. Housing sales are down twenty-something percent. And the increase in the federal rates, where now mortgages costing you somewhere between seven and seven point seven. It's really hurt the housing market a lot.
Well, it's part of the overall revenue collected. So when your overall revenue collected is at ninety-four point four-three, but your expenditures are eighty-eight.
Right.
It's got to be watching.
Yeah. Thank you.
Larry, based on the decline that we're seeing in the consumption tax revenues, are you still comfortable with the proposed budget? We, I know we reduced those.
Oh yeah, I was real conservative this year on the, on the projections I gave you for this year. What I do is, when we start the budget process in November, there's a spreadsheet I do where I get all the data and I do calculations on how percentage-wise things are going. And I see how the calculations go up and down. I adjust the previous, all the months coming forward by that additional change in calculations. So if I see a trend going down, I calculate a trend going down forward versus whatever we are currently getting in activity. As each month goes by, I adjust those calculations going forward. So I get a real good understanding of what we're going or see the trends of where we're going. And one of the trends I saw going for intangible taxes, it's going down and it's not really stabilized yet. So I dropped that one from where it is now, ten point two-five for budget, down to five million dollars for next year. As you can see, it looks like we will probably hit five million dollars.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, next we have policy JKB solicitations by students with Mr. Mitch Young.
And I don't think, is there anything that goes up on there, Susan? Okay. Good evening. In front of you or up here on the screen, you have a proposal to change board policy JKB solicitation by students, which was originally adopted in two thousand and four. This policy was put in place to guide the fundraising activities at each of our schools, as well as the fundraising activities done in the name of each of our schools' programs and organizations such as booster clubs, PTOs and so forth. At that time that it was adapted, the primary focus was really on door-to-door sales, hence the title Solicitation by Students. But it really has come to, to the way it was written, to take over kind of the entire guideline for all school-based fundraisers. I would note, there is no indication that this was ever a required policy by the state. So it was initiated locally. The way this particular policy was written, it has very definitive requirements, very prescriptive, which allows for very little flexibility as times have changed over the past twenty years since it was written. And so our proposal is to simplify the language of the policy as you see in front of you and require that a regulation be written or a series of regulations as needed. This would allow flexibility from year to year as time goes on. Obviously, the monthly reporting that, that we provide you to stay apprised of all the fundraisers throughout, throughout our system would, would continue. And at this point, we would just ask that you take this under consideration between now and, and next month.
All right, thank you. Anybody having questions? Okay. Okay, next we have policy JBC school admissions with Kathy Carpenter.
Hello, good evening. All right. So the policy on school admissions has been updated because of a state board rule change. And the reason we wanted to be specific on this policy is because we get quite a few questions about enrollment since COVID. So lots of things have changed in the last few years. So you're going to see quite a few board definition changes, military families, and then we have some departmental definitions that are added, DBHDD and DHS and DJJ. Then if you go down to page two, we have items ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen, which define people who can enroll students who are not the biological parents. And so the legislature and the state really wanted to expand this definition so that people didn't have to go through courts and things like that to, to get kids in school. So our primary focus is making sure we can get kids in, in school as quickly as we can. So then you have the authority to enroll. That includes the legal guardian, of course, but also other people who are taking charge of a student if a biological parent is not capable of taking care of that student anymore. Of course, you can still probate, petition probate court. But then also, it could be a kinship caregiver, a fictive kin, or another person. So just primarily a person who is stepping in to help a, a student whose parent is no longer able to, to take care of them and enroll them in school. Items E, F, and G relate to immediately getting students enrolled. So you have McKenney Vento students who are homeless, who can get immediate enrollment. But then you also have students who have a right to immediate enrollment when they're through one of the services at DHS, DJJ, or DBHDD. Items H, I, and J all relate to military families. And the state of Georgia has put special conditions in place to make sure we're getting our military, our children of our military families enrolled as quickly as possible through things like making sure if they're deployed and a relative is taking care of those, those children, that they have a means to get those students enrolled through guardianship of a relative. And then they also allow public school choice. And they also allow enrollment without proof of residency and with military orders to transfer to a nearby base. On the next page, items K, L, M, N, O, and P all relate to immigrant students or visa-holding students. These enrollment procedures used to be a little bit more narrow, but we've added on quite a few different visas. And we've also made sure people understand that schools aren't really in charge of defining immigrant status. We're really focused on making sure the kids get enrolled in school and, and are educated. If you go down to number two, age eligibility, the primary thing that has changed in this one is that we have changed our age ceiling from the age of twenty to twenty-one as long as the student has not been withdrawn from school for more than one quarter of the school year. All of the other changes are really kind of just semantical changes. We still have, students have to be five for kindergarten enrollment and six for first grade enrollment. And then we also have the age requirements for students who are under IEPs. But those aren't changed. It was just, it was just verbiage change. Then if you go down to page six, we eliminated students placed by DHR and DJJ because some of those names are outdated. And then also, it made more sense to place them in the authority to enroll section. And then the final thing we took out of this policy was item, item number seven, where it said that schools aren't in charge of immigrant status. We just flowed that over to the section related to immigrant and non-immigrant students with visas. So do you have any questions?
I don't. Anybody else?
Thank you so much.
Okay, and we will leave that on the table. Next, we have action items, the book appeals with Mike Evans.
Good evening. Tonight, you have multiple book appeals before you that fall underneath the harmful to minors policy IKBC. These four books were challenged at a high school on March twenty-fourth, during which time a parent initiated a formal request for the books to be removed. The principal reviewed the material in conjunction with the tenants of the policy and legislation to determine that these books did not meet the criteria underneath harmful to minors. So following the procedures under policy IKBC on May first, the parent appealed that decision to you, the board. At this time, I'll present each book individually for you. The first book for you tonight is Dime by E.R. Frank. At this time, I ask our superintendent to recommend to you to affirm the decision of the principal regarding the book Dime.
Recommend the board affirm the decision of the building principal.
Madam Chair, I move to accept the recommendation of the superintendent with the further condition that the book must have signed parental consent before being distributed to students.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Okay.
The next book for you tonight is Orcs in Crake by Margaret Atwood. So at this time, I ask your superintendent to recommend to you to affirm the decision of the principal regarding the book Orcs in Crake.
Recommend the board affirm the decision of the building principal.
Do you have a motion?
Madam Chair, I make the same motion that accept the recommendation of the superintendent with the further condition that the book require signed parental consent before being distributed to students.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Unanimous.
The third book for you tonight is Perfect by Ellen Hopkins. At this time, I ask your superintendent to recommend to you to affirm the decision of the principal regarding the book Perfect.
Recommend the board affirm the decision of the building principal.
Madam Chair, I make the same motion as the previous two books.
Do I have a second?
I'll, just a second.
Second by Lindsay, all in favor? Unanimous.
And the final book for you tonight is Tilt by Ellen Hopkins. At this time, I ask your superintendent to recommend to you to affirm the decision of the principal for the book Tilt.
Recommend the board affirm the decision of the building principal.
Madam Chair, I make the same motion, requiring parental consent.
Do I have a second? Second by Lindsay, all in favor? Unanimous. Okay, thank you, Mike. Next, we have points of information. Do you have anything? Okay. We'll take a short recess for just a couple of minutes. If anybody wants to, needs to leave, you're welcome to do so now. And then we'll be back for public participation on non-agenda items. Items. And first, we have Jerk or Shell. There's really somebody before you, but they didn't show.
Children. The book Blood at the Root recounted the treatment black Republicans had at the hands of white Democrats in the early nineteen hundreds. The author noted the lack of legal remedies, given the statutes of limitations, but also wanted to ignore those legal protections and championed the idea of using federal force to redistribute resources from innocent citizens who had nothing to do with the horrors of the past. Sadly, while the author did a fine job in reporting on the brutal historical record of Forsyth County in the early nineteen hundreds, he learned the wrong lesson. Black Republicans in Forsyth County were driven out in nineteen twelve because white Democrats found them collectively guilty for the death of May Crow. The author and his supporters want to hold white people collectively guilty today for the past crimes of long-dead white Democrats by the same evil racist rationale. Even worse, their racism is used as a cloak of virtue, insisting that the problems of people of color can be solved only by white saviors. The author states bluntly, except that white supremacy was invented by and, and for the benefit of white people, and so the difficult work of dismantling it falls to us. As a proud American of color, I reject this racism. White supremacy has never had any impact on my life and it never will. I do not depend on white people for my worth. And I won't live in fear of invisible microaggressions that can only be detected by an electron microscope. White saviors need to leave us alone and stop pretending that our skin color is what defines us, nearly sixty years after Dr. King's proclamation of our character. And thanks for the gift of the book, I brought the book to share as well, Irreversible Damage by Abigail Schreier. In her letter, my kind new friend talked fondly about a female-to-male transgender friend of hers, who at the age of twenty-four was very happy with her lifelong commitment to medical intervention. Of course, adults should be able to choose for themselves whatever hormonal or surgical treatments they're willing to pay for. Installing horns, removing fingers, or adding additional breasts might be odd, but adults have every right to creatively mutilate themselves. That said, my two daughters are under constant social pressure to see transition as a cure for the natural trauma of puberty. The social contagion of trans identity, particularly for girls, is truly a public health crisis. And the well-intentioned notion of affirming only makes this crisis worse. In Europe, standards of care are now recognizing that gender dysphoria is a mental illness, not a physical one. Ironically, this mental illness, where the first thing prescribed are puberty blockers, is actually cured by puberty in most cases. I humbly ask the board to make sure that our school system refers children who suffer from gender dysphoria to proper mental health treatment and that we avoid the firmly discredited affirming care model that endangers our young girls and boys. And so on that note, thank you very much for your time. And again, I'd love to have lunch with anyone who disagrees.
Okay, next we have Kath- Kathleen Krainik.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Kathleen Krainik. And tonight, I'd like to thank Forsyth County Schools for agreeing to resolve the issues investigated by the U.S. Department of Education, Office of Civil Rights, and to address the concerns that the district may have violated student civil rights. I'm thrilled that the agreed-to resolution requires that notices be posted for secondary school students clearly stating that the district strives to provide a global perspective and to promote diversity by including in school libraries materials about and by authors of all cultures. I also look forward to the results of the school climate survey to be conducted next semester to address the prevalence of harassment in the district's middle and high schools. The survey will also assess students' willingness to report incidents to school personnel, the perception of each school's handling of such reports, suggestions for reducing incidence of harassment, as well as improving school response. Speaking personally and as a member of the Forsyth Coalition for Education, I'm pleased with the district's broad and proactive response to the concerns raised by students and investigated by the Office of Civil Rights. The need for such a response became clearer in the days following the announcement of the investigation and resolution. Asked about it, self-proclaimed head mama bear Cindy Martin told the Associated Press, "This is not about books. This is about the federal government using bully tactics to indoctrinate our children into the LGBTQ ideology." As ridiculous as that second part is, let me read that first sentence again. "This is not about books." Haven't we been hearing for more than a year that this is about books? But of course, most of us know this was never about books. This was always about discrimination and harassment. But it was validating to hear the quiet part right out loud. And it's reassuring that it will be addressed by Forsyth County Schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Kim Ho- Hoog? Huff? No? Kim? H-O-U-G-H. I'm not sure if it's... She's not here. Okay. Anita Tucker?
Good evening. June is a very diverse month. The first weekend in June is gun violence prevention groups across America commemorate gun violence survivors at Wear Orange events. The Coming City Council has issued a proclamation commemorating Wear Orange for the past five years. We appreciate it. We celebrate the American flag on June fourteenth. Father's Day is the third Sunday in June. Juneteenth is celebrated on June nineteenth. It became a national holiday in two thousand and twenty-one. Juneteenth is officially recognized as the final end of slavery in America. Although it was two and a half years after the signing of the Emancipation Proclamation, Galveston, Texas slaves officially became freed people. We know that the deep roots of slavery permeate American society today. June is also Gay Pride Month. Gay Pride Month is celebrated to honor the nineteen sixty-nine Stonewall uprising in Manhattan, New York. The Stonewall uprising was a tipping point for the gay liberation movement in the United States. All of these amazing opportunities to revisit historical events, recognize special people in our lives, and honor a national symbol, provide us with a variety that we choose to recognize or not, being different is and should be celebrated, honored, acknowledged, and respected. Celebrating diverse cultures in no impedes on anyone. Suppose you were at a baseball game that has a five-foot wooden fence... Suppose you are at a baseball game that has a five-foot wooden fence around it. People that are shorter than five feet need help to be lifted up to be able to see the game. People that are exactly five feet still need a little help. People that are over five feet can see just fine without any help. By helping the people that can't see, we include everyone. No one, no one is any way harmed by another person's need for some extra help. I'm going to quote an exceptional American poet, Amanda Gorman. This is from The Hill We Climb. "We will not be turned around or interrupted by intimidation because we know our inaction and our inertia will be the inheritance of the next generation." Thank you. Good night.
Okay, next we have Becky Wimmer.
Hey, guys. The people of Forsyth County do not want their community and their schools hijacked by extremists and manufactured moral panics that have nothing to do with Forsyth and everything to do with a bigger agenda pushed by national groups, many of them funded by dark money. Earlier this month, the Southern Poverty Law Center, or SPLC, recognizing the alarming increase in groups attacking inclusive education, designated 11 so-called parents' rights groups, including Moms for Liberty and No Left Turn in Education, as extremist groups. In their report entitled The Year in Hate and Extremism, the SPLC explains that extremist groups use tactics rooted in age-old white supremacy, quote, "publicizing their fight for alleged parents' rights while simply attempting to maintain absolute authority on issues they oppose," end quote. They will try to frame their crusade as a fight for decency. But a quick glance at the website booklooks.org, where they get all the copy and paste passages for their book challenge packets, gives away their game. In addition to books that may contain passages of sexual content, there sits The Anti-Racist Kid and The Pronoun Book. It seems like it's non-white and LGBTQ perspectives that they take to be indecent. Groups such as No Left Turn in Education have hit upon the strategy of weaponizing parenthood to move to the mainstream what is actually extreme. Their faux battle cry of parental rights really turns out to mean rights for some parents, but not for others. Indeed, ask a parent of a child of color or an LGBTQ child whether they feel this movement has their rights at heart. The NLT agenda is to bully administrators, teachers, and other parents to prioritize the needs of white cisgender children over all others. Recall, the leader of the mama bears right here in Forsyth is on record saying, "It's not about the books." It is not about the books for them, and they won't stop with books. It will be books they don't like, then ideas they don't like, then people they don't like. The SPLC has tracked a rise in threats and harassment of educators nationwide since these parents' rights groups began their campaigns. And we heard from students right here in Forsyth who felt less safe at school after their book banning crusade began. Both Moms for Liberty and No Left Turn are active in our area, and one of our sitting board members helped to found No Left Turn right here in Forsyth. Today, I call on our board members to disavow the values, tactics, and goals of these groups. Their values are hateful and exclusionary. Their tactics are to infringe on student civil rights. Their goals are to rewrite history and replace it with lies, to push marginalized groups further aside, and ultimately to undermine public education by taking taxpayer money to fund their own private and parochial schools. Does no better time for our Board of Ed to issue a strong statement disavowing the activities of No Left Turn in our community and to affirm our school district's values that Forsyth be an inclusive, connected, and safe space for all students? Thank you.
That's all we have on our agenda. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Lindsay. Second by Wes. All in favor? Unanimous.